Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And before we get started with the hard work tonight, we have some fun. And I would like to invite the Girl Scouts to come up and join me today. Come on up here in front with me, please, ladies. And this is one of the highlights of my term as mayor, is to be able to do this every year. And the Girl Scouts are such a terrific organization throughout this country, but especially here locally. So I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the premier organization for and leading authority on girls, builds girls of courage, confidence, and character, who make the world a better place. And whereas, in partnership with nearly 11,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts of Western Ohio yearly serves 39,000 female members in 32 counties throughout the western Ohio and southeastern Indiana. And whereas, through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime so that they may contribute to their communities. And your predecessors contribute all the time, and I'm sure you will as well. And whereas, over 50 million women have enjoyed the benefits of the Girl Scout leadership experience as an American tradition for 109 years. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim March 12th through March 18th, 2023, as Girl Scout Week. So it will be Girl Scout Week in the city of Beaver Creek and applaud the commitment of Girl Scout, that Girl Scouting has made to leadership development of our community girls. So ladies, I would like to just, if you would just pass that down, just mentally sign it and pass it down. And then, then I'm going to ask, if you have any comments, I'm going to ask you to take the mic and pass it down. Do you have a comment? Well, then you may pass it down.
Introduce yourself.
Pass it back here. Introduce yourself.
My name is Haley, and this is actually the first time I ever knew it was Girl Scout Week here in Ohio.
All right.
My name's Alkemi, and I'm really happy to be here.
My name is Riley W., and I'm a little sad because about half of our troop couldn't make it here, but we're glad to be here without them.
My name is Reagan, and I'm just glad to be here.
My name is Susan Grinkemeier, and I'm one of the service unit managers for Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. And I appreciate so much the opportunity for the mayor to declare this Girl Scout Week in Beaver Creek. Girl Scouts is a big deal in Beaver Creek. Of those 39,000 girls in the council, that is western Ohio, from Cincinnati to Toledo, 1,000 of those girls are here in Beaver Creek. One in eight girls in Beaver Creek is a Girl Scout, and that's true at every level of Girl Scouts, from the little ones all the way up to the high school age girls, where we have 200 Girl Scouts that attend Beaver Creek High School, and that's just extraordinary. We've had a great Girl Scout Week so far. Last Sunday, seven girls from Beaver Creek received the highest award that they can earn in Girl Scouts, Girl Scout Gold Award, and that was an amazing accomplishment. And this troop is working on their own accomplishments, and Riley is going to describe the bronze award that they're working on.
So the bronze award is one of the highest honors that a Girl Scout can receive. They normally receive a bronze, silver, or gold award by doing any project that will help their community. And our bronze award for our troop 34338 is to just generally help save the bees.
Awesome. Great. None of those seven girls who were getting the gold award this year could be here, and I apologize for that. That would have been really great. We appreciate the real partnership that Girl Scouts have with all aspects of our community. We're well supported by government, by schools, by the churches, by just everybody, and we appreciate that a great deal. So thank you. And so before we're done with ours, we want to make sure that all of City Council receives a little thank you from us, right, ladies?
Comments? Just open it up. If you have something you'd like to add, please do.
Mr. Kern usually asks for specific questions.
Councilman Kern does, is that...
Oh, those are good. Yeah.
Congratulations to the Scouts and the outstanding work that you do in the community. We had the honor a couple of years ago to visit Juliet Loew's home.
Oh, wonderful.
Beautiful. Yeah. Join that.
All right.
These are my favorites.
Thank you so much. Oh, that's wonderful.
Well, I can say, as the father of a Girl Scout, you do so much throughout the community, and I'm just really proud of all the work that the girls put in. And my daughter has been out feverishly selling Girl Scout cookies. I've got one. Thank you.
The chief needs one back there, too.
Yeah, that table on the far, your far left and all the way in the back.
Oh, yeah.
They would more than, be more than happy to enjoy your cookies.
Notice how Bill showed up for that.
Well, ladies, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. We appreciate the cookies and look forward to your project. So thank you. With that, we're going to move on. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer. Councilmember Schwartz.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Move to excuse Councilmember Schwartz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'd like the young ladies to join me at the table one more time and lead us in the pledge, please.
Oh, my. Here we go.
You can stay at your seat if you wish, but if you, the mic will be better if you come up toward the table. I'll let you guys kick it off for me, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. If we would just take a moment here for a moment of silence to remember, and today especially, then remember all the good work that scouting does throughout the country and especially here at home. All right, we have an agenda before us this evening. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda this evening, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. First is February 21st, which is a work session. Any changes?
Move to approve work session minutes from February 21st.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for February 21st. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, aye. Next are the minutes from February 27th, regular session minutes. Any changes?
Move to approve February 27th, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 27 minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a pre-scheduled speaker. Chief? The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Welcome, Council. It is an honor to be up here to follow the Girl Scouts, as you will well know that volunteerism is so important in our community, in our culture, and without them, bringing up the future leaders of tomorrow. As many of us say, they are the leaders of today sometimes. So it's an honor to be up here and follow, follow that group. Back on January the 25th of this year, we had held our annual departmental awards and recognition ceremony, which is something, as a chief, we, I get to kind of emcee, if you want to lead, and I look forward to that each year, kind of to showcase those members kind of come up to the top, if you want to mention that, and recognize all of our members for a job well done. As you all know, our mission statement is to work in partnership with our community, which we heard from the leader of the Girl Scouts. Working in partnership with our community is so important to where we safeguard life and property and enhancing the rights of everyone in our community, just to make sure that our community is a wonderful place to work and to live. So as we went through our meeting, we're going to highlight some of those areas. I think I'm doing this right. Yes, there we go. First of all, we recognize all those folks that received the fitness incentive award. On an annual basis, officers, any of the members of the police department are able to participate in an incentive award that basically focuses on the physical well-being. And what that does is allows them to do a course of running, a mile, mile and a half, push-ups and sit-ups, and those that successfully complete receive an incentive award. And there are the 12 that received it here for 2022. And in doing so, we had, we started that back in 2020, and in cooperation with the FOP, the union, and they, something we all came together on to, you know, focus on the well-being of the, the physical well-being of our bodies, and, which helps reduce injuries. So in doing so, we had those 12 recipients in 2022. As a move forward to our community recognition, this is where our officers have received those community awards, such as the Knights of Columbus Council Award and the Green Optimist Club Award. This year, Officer Chris Brownlee, or in 2022, Chris Brownlee received both of those awards for our community, which has to be nominated and go through those, the boards through Knights of Columbus and obviously the Green Optimist Club. So that was, those are fun things that we get to attend, those ceremonies and so forth with each of those organizations. And we're looking forward to our 2023 recipients this year. On a quarterly basis, we do, we kind of changed things up here a few years ago, where we used to recognize these folks on an annual basis. So quarterly now, we recognize those, two different types of quarterly awards you can receive. A letter of recognition, which is going above average initiative and effort on a daily basis. And then we have the departmental commendation, which is the outstanding performance from your normal duties. So we had those four that received letters of recognition, and then we had the departmental commendation going to Officer Records Clerk Faith Lammert. And that was for a, a person came into our lobby, it was in May of '22, under duress, goes up to the window, records, I'm sorry, and dispatch, and they were shorthanded at the moment. One of them was out of the room, and Records Clerk Faith Lammert recognized something was wrong here, goes out, and this person was basically choking. And she performed the Heimlich maneuver to dislodge whatever was there, and the medics ended up coming and taking care of her. So that was why she received the departmental commendation for going, outstanding performance during that event. So as we move through this, we move into our 25 years of dedicated service. Communication operator Libby Chapman received that. She was the only one we had this year, or in '22 anyways. And Libby actually started out with us as a records clerk, and then several years ago moved into the dispatcher, communication operator position, and has done an outstanding job since she's been there. So that's our 25 years of dedicated service. Moving into our COPP of the years, you know, our volunteers, with Councilman Adams being in this group, they do a little over 3,000 hours of volunteer service to the city, to the police department on an annual basis. They have to do 16 hours of volunteer work a month, which doesn't seem like a whole lot, but throw that on top of your job, and if you're retired, I think some of those folks are even busier than our folks that are working. And that's four hours a week they give to us, and then the hours really add up with Popcorn Festival, Fourth of July, and so forth. So COPP Doug Musser received the award for 2022, and we just celebrated our 35th year of having our volunteer program, the Citizens on Preventive Patrol. And it's something that's not, we're still nationally recognized, and folks still call us, and how, how do you do that? How's that work with all the, you know, the complications of all the different red tape and so forth, and getting through workers' compensation and things like that? So he was recognized from his peers and COPP coordinator for the COPP Member of the Year. Moving into our Civilian of the Year. Deb Barber is our Property and Resource Clerk. She has several areas that she's in, responsible for. She's kind of our quartermaster. She oversees the property room, the day-to-day evidence, you know, basically how it's secured, chain of custody. She's in charge of all of our vehicles, from the ordering to making sure all the equipment's there for those vehicles, the building itself. She's in charge of that, making sure things are in order and making sure all the supplies are there. And then the uniforms and equipment. She had a busy year, as you well know. In 2022, we brought on 11 officers and one communication operator, and we have one in the police academy. She's responsible for the incoming of all property from when somebody retires, and she's responsible for all the property and uniforms going out to those folks that are hired on. So she had an extremely busy year. She was recognized by our department for being the 2022 Civilian of the Year, and we congratulated her on that. Moving to our Officer of the Year. Justin Tyley has been with us just a little over 12 years. He also serves our country as Ohio Air National Guard. He's been doing that for close to 20 years or more. And he is an FTO, Field Training Officer. Justin's one of our range instructors. He is a mentor, and as a field training officer, he is really good at working with our younger officers. So he's kind of been busy the last year or so, as we've brought on so many of those younger officers. But he was recognized by his peers. Everyone has an opportunity to make a nomination for this award, as with the other two awards, and he was recognized as our Officer of the Year. So we recognized him that evening. Well deserved. Then, we have an award through our policies and procedures, where there's a chief's award of merit, where as the chief, it's one of those privileges that I have, recognize someone who has that positive attitude all the time, excellent teamwork, going above and beyond the normal duties of the day, and showing excellence in their careers. We had an extremely busy year in 2022. These folks here, Captain Lindsay, Captain Moynar, and Captain Sumner, were instrumental in the hiring of those 11 folks. They did most of the process, as far as the interviewing, keeping track of all the different important dates, as far as examinations and psychological examinations and so on and so forth. However, I wanted to recognize them for the busyness of that year and just staying on task, plus each of them have a division that they're commander over, and keeping on top of all that as we were going through the hiring process as well. And then my executive assistant Karen Mahaffey, I recognized her because she kind of kept me in line, and she kept those three folks in line up there as well. And if you needed anything, you call in and ask Karen. She's going to be able to pretty much guide you, whatever direction that, based on your request. So I had the privilege of honoring those four folks with the 2022 Chief's Award of Merit through our policies and procedures, and it was well deserved. So again, that's the summary of our 2022 awards ceremony that we had back in January. And it's been my honor and privilege to work with all of these folks, plus all of the members of the police department, from the person that takes care of our building, as we know, it takes the body to, all members of the body make this happen, from the person that takes care of our building, all the way through my assistant and myself. However, it takes so many other peoples to make this go on a, on a regular basis. And it's always an honor to take care of the awards and recognition ceremony that we do each year, and I'm looking forward to this year coming up, because again, it's starting off to be another busy year with keeping up with staffing and so forth. So, so I just wanted to give them a public recognition. I know we did it privately, or with our group back in January, so this is the time for me to do it publicly, and so I want to say thank you to all of them. So, and thank you, all of you folks, which allowed this to happen through all the different budget process and the support that we have from the mayor, council members, and city manager, which shows through our community as well. So I just want to thank you, and it's an honor and privilege to being able to serve as chief, and looking forward to another wonderful year. Thank you.
Very good. Very good, Chief. Appreciate the, the update on that, and it's always, you know, our officers go be above and beyond on a daily basis, and I'm sure it's difficult to pick sometimes who to, who to appreciate and not, but they're all well appreciated. And were there any interesting stories told at the awards? I know in some years past, there have been some interesting stories. I won't ask you to repeat any, but it...
Yes.
But you, I guess the bottom line is, you have a little fun with it when you, when you do these awards.
Yes, we do. And I know City Manager is able to be there that, this year. So yes, we do have, we, we enjoy one another's company. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank your officers as well for us.
I will. Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. Moving on on the agenda, we go to our ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 23-7.
Ordinance 23-7, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Chapter 30 governmental organization of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek and enacting a new Chapter 30 governmental organization to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek to update and improve governmental organization in the city of Beaver Creek and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And I believe Mr. Landrum's going to cover this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the last couple of weeks. We have started out in mid-February with a work session presentation that led to a full pre-scheduled speaker presentation on February 27th outlining the management's plan for changes, updating of staffing that has occurred due to recent retirements, recent people getting quote-unquote promoted to other jurisdictions that we've lost. And this is a, one of Chapter 30 that will need updated to reflect the changes that you all have been presented with. It's just as simple. It's really, when it's smaller, it's one page, but really, the finance department is relabeled Finance, Human Resources is crossed out because that goes under the new Assistant City Manager that's coming up here. Public Administrative Services Department is relabeled Public Services Department. Parks and Rec are removed from underneath that organization, and then simply the Assistant City Manager has Human Resources, Parks, and Golf underneath of it. This is the full extent of what you're voting on. It's that simple. There's, that's just a Chapter 30, what's called, referred to as Chapter 30 governmental organization. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, this is an ordinance, and so at this time, if there's anyone present tonight that would like to address Council and speak about this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing no one move, we will close the public input section and open it up to Council. And we've, we've gone over this at work sessions, but anything you might want to add, please do. Anyone?
I've got something to add. I appreciate you putting that up on the screen for those in the audience and those watching at home, so that they can really see the changes, because I feel like the changes really do make us more efficient as a government and really align those divisions with the appropriate, not only people, but expertise. And so, to me, it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve 23-7, Your Honor.
As an emergency, please.
Oh, as an emergency. Excuse me.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-7 as an emergency. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Next is Resolution 23-11.
23, Resolution 23-11, a resolution by the Beaver Creek City Council to accept the proposed opioid settlement with retailers.
Thank you. Mr. McHugh, you want to fill us in?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is, again, and Council's seen several of these already with manufacturers, distributors, but these are the actual retailers, who the state of Ohio, again, with other jurisdictions, went, you know, filed an action, ultimately was resolved, the full terms of which we're still getting, but they've put us on a fairly short notice of how, of accepting this, and like the past ones, I'm sure will be very similar, was the funds have to go to the police department for operations drug-related, and I know there's been a number of uses for that, so I think because of the DARE program, some of the other money so far. So I expect the same thing in this one, but the same answer of, ask that he be given authority, so when we do get all the specifics, we can move forward and accept, so the city will receive its share of the funds.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or questions?
I have one question, just in the title of the resolution, we call it settlement with retailers, and I know that in the past, we've seen two or three different resolutions come before us with the opioid settlement. Mr. McHugh does, I, I see you on the third whereas we do state those retailers, but in the future, if there's another one added, do we have to pass another resolution?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, but I would not think so. But these, unless it's a different settlement, now that might be something, possibly, but these are the parties that all the, in the information the city was provided, these specific companies were the ones named. There were no other companies like Rite Aid, an example. They were not named. These are the specific companies, so I chose to use these companies.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. One of the previous settlements had a requirement of a certain percentage of municipalities that had to pass ordinances. Does this fit that mold, or does this stand alone?
Based on the information we have so far, it's, it was simply that we can elect in or we can elect out.
Thank you.
We didn't have, I know in some of the past ones, it had to be so many jurisdictions within Ohio and other states, but in this one, we weren't provided that, so it may be a different structure, I think.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Excuse me. Motion to approve Resolution 23-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 23-12.
Resolution 23-12, strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Landrum, you're going to do this one as well?
Yeah, I guess I'm on the hot seat a lot tonight. This one was asked to be done, again, we have a lot going on at State House, Bill One, you have different things that are potentially impacting our local government fund and as well as property taxes potentially as well. But this one specifically is, is about the local government fund, just a little bit of a, and all this is, is a, a resolution endorsing that, you know, that there be changed, that it be made whole, that be restored with the funding the state is, you know, millions and millions of dollars in surplus, and yet, I was with local government during 2010, '11, and '12, when all this was implemented. And I know for a fact, just like it here in Beaver Creek, those communities, when that was cut in half to give the money, to save the state money, that those local jurisdictions had to, through levies, through income tax with other cities, had to raise taxes locally because of the actions of the state. And basically, so the state pushed it down to the local jurisdictions to balance their budgets. That is something that should not have happened, but it did. And just to put it into a little realm of what we're talking about, the reductions have resulted in an estimated loss revenue, if we put it in 2022 terms, of 907, over $970,000 using the current funding level, and since 2022... funding level, and since 2011, the lost revenue is estimated to be $3.7 million that the city of Beaver Creek lost because of this funding, so that's, how much more streets could we have paved, how much more, you know, officers maybe we could have hired, how many, you know, all those things that, because of lost revenue, but what happened there is, you know, we had to put more into asking for levies. So all this is, is a resolution as read, just urging the Governor and the members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore local government funds to preseason, recession funding levels. It's just a kind of more of a policy statement by City Council, and I believe they've asked all the City Councils and other public entities to have this stance.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to lead off on this one. This is, this is sort of, I mean, one, it's in response to trying to restore in full the local government fund based on their surplus revenues, but the other part of it is that in, within House Bill I, while the recommendation for increase is only like one tenth of a percent, not anywhere, not significant at all when it comes to restoring what we had in the past. So this is an attempt to just remind the lawmakers that we believe it's time for it to be restored. And, okay, now, discussion, anyone?
If I could add on to the Mayor's comments, I would suggest that if we pass this resolution tonight, that we all get a copy of it after it's signed so that we can take our own action as well.
There you go. It's very good.
And the mischief with House Bill I could really jeopardize our levies. As it stands right now, I realize it's in negotiations and speaking with the auditor the other night, why, he said there's, you know, still talking, but it certainly has serious implications for Beaver Creek.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right. Did we vote on this one yet?
No.
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 23-12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 23-13.
Resolution 23-13, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Beaver Creek Community Athletic Association.
Good evening.
Hello.
How are we doing? This agreement is with the city and the Beaver Creek Community Athletic Association. They're the group that runs, they're a volunteer group that runs baseball out at EJ Nutter Park. They have been out there since the early 90s, and we've had numerous agreements with them throughout the years. It's been a great partnership. They take care of all the registrations, they have a concession stand, their buildings and the infield, and then the city staff, our park staff mows the outfield and the, I mean, the green space at Nutter. So this is just a renewal agreement. In the past, it's been about thirty, sixteen years. Yeah, so this, one of the changes that we made for this one is just do it in five-year increments, and if all is going well, we'll just go ahead and renew it, and we can do that three different times, so this is for the first five years.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
This keeps the existing agreement just in place in an ongoing basis?
That's correct. Yep.
I have a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 23-13.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next is Resolution 23-14.
Resolution 23-14, excuse me, a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council recognizing Jeff Mormon's service to the city of Beaver Creek and approving the City Manager's appointment of Jeff Mormon to the position of Public Services Director/City Engineer.
Well, this is one of the few times that I've had to do this. Done it with Chief, I've done it with Randy under some sadder circumstances, but happy for him, but this is a happy, happy one, kind of like Chief ever's leaving as far as a joyous occasion, and so this one is that we've seen a promotion to another jurisdiction, and so there's a vacancy for a director position. This is why we had to do just the Chapter 30, this is part of it, part of the change that we had. I'd ask Mr. Mormon if you'd come up, please. Is your wife Kathy?
She is.
Okay. You guys want to, she can join you, please. While, while serving in the Ohio, this is Jeff Mormon and his wife Kathy, while serving in the Ohio Army National Guard, Jeff attended the Ohio State University and received a degree in civil engineering in 1993. Now, we just aged ourselves when you said that.
A little bit.
He wrote it, I didn't. Following graduation, he worked for the Air Force Material Command at Wright-Patt and for the city of Xenia. Jeff started his city of Beaver Creek, with city of Beaver Creek in 1997 as the Assistant City Engineer. While working with the city of Beaver Creek, he received a master's degree in public administration from Wright State University in 2007, something we both share, I was just a few years ahead of you, and his professional engineer's license, and was promoted to the city engineer position in 2010. In Jeff's career, he's widened every road possible just about. City of Beaver Creek, he's overseen the construction of many major improvements, including widening of some of the city's busiest corridors, traffic improvements, drainage, and a review of plans for new developments. Jeff and his wife Kathy have been married for nearly 27 years, now, see, he told on you there. Twenty-seven years, and have two children, Zach and Julia, both that are attending Wright State University. I, as City Manager, I have selected the appointment of Jeff Mormon to the position of Public Service Director/City Engineer, where he will directly supervise public services and engineering divisions. Pursuant to Section 7.02 of the Beaver Creek City Charter, I ask and recommend that City Council approve the City Manager's appointment of Jeff Mormon.
Very good.
And if you would be so kind to make, if you have any comments or anything, but make the appointment or approve the appointment, and then we'll give Mr. Mormon the microphone for a moment.
I think the City Manager said, let's do this with no comments, didn't he?
Yes.
No question. All right, anybody ready for a motion, or you would like to make a comment beforehand?
I'll move to approve... I'll move to approve Resolution 23-14.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mormon.
The mic is yours, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I just want to express my gratitude for your approval of the resolution. As I say, I've really enjoyed my 25-year career here at the city of Beaver Creek, and I, I really do appreciate the confidence the City Manager's shown in me and City Council tonight in allowing me to continue to serve this community in this new role. I'm very excited to go in with it, so look forward to having many interactions from here on out with the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work for many years, and we, now, the challenge for next year is to get more grants. But congratulations.
We'll do our very best, for sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'll indulge just for one moment.
Yes.
Kathy, come on back up. All right, say, Jeff, come on over here. We'll face this way, but here, we go, okay? And, yeah, let me shake your hand real quick.
You might have to hear us after, we're truly darned.
All right, give a picture of them together. Go ahead.
Can we do it afterwards?
You want to? All right, well, I'll, let City Council, let him, we do want that. Go back behind there, right behind there.
And you two, come back here, you two, Pete, come back here and stand so we can get all of Council. Right behind the table, right here.
Yeah, we want to do it while the lighting should be good here. Come on in. Yeah, stand up, guys. We're doing this for you guys.
All right.
Yeah, come on over. Okay, this is the whole production.
Hey, we only do this once every how many years?
I think Mr. Kern. All right, everyone, smile. Great, thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Me down. One of you.
All right, next on the agenda is a decision item, and it's the approval of the Dayton Development Coalition DDC Fly-In, and I'm going to ask Pete to kind of go over that in generalities at this time, please.
I guess annually, the DDC Dayton Development Coalition organizes, usually in the spring area time, a, what's called a Dayton Fly-In, and it's representatives of not just Beaver Creek, it's of all the cities, counties, townships, and it's a time to meet in Washington, DC, and we meet with our legislators for projects, for funding, to bend their ear on such things as what we talked about, local government fund, House Bill I, for if there's any, a lot of times, the, some of the local representatives will also be there, but more, this is on a more of a federal level. So this year, it is April 17th.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, for two days, we have budgeted in the budget for myself and Mayor for the DDC Fly-In, including, it's usually with the DDC, the registration cost includes the hotel, so the only thing separate that you have to do is the fly, the airline flight. That's been already booked and secured for Mayor and I, because that was already a budgeted item, a non-budgeted item, but budgeted, let me see how it says, it wasn't specifically called out. There was another request from Vice Mayor Garcia to also attend. Again, there is money there in the general pot that Council has expenses and things, trainings and events that they go to, to pay for this, so I, I'm not going to say there's not money, there is money there, it just wasn't a line item as it was for Mayor and myself, so that's the only difference for that. Actually, we kind of got lucked out, and the hotels were already booked up, and, but DDC made a way to find a hotel, so we, I do have it quote-unquote "secured" for this moment, I haven't paid for it yet, for Vice Mayor Garcia, but it's ready to be paid if it's passed tonight, and she has secured airline flight herself to, it was, time is ticking on securing an airline, or you might be walking there, but, but she's already done that, so Vice Mayor and Mayor have both been to these in the past and realized the importance of these events, and I'll let you guys describe anything else you want.
Before I turn it over to the Vice Mayor, I just want to, just want to comment that the Vice Mayor has gone in my place in the past, and this year, she is on the Board of Directors for the Miami Valley Regional Planning, and she came to me last summer, actually, I think, and even back then, and asked about going, and of course, it went in one ear and a little over my head by the time we got to this stage, so she came back a few, couple of weeks ago and said, I'd still like to go. So that's, I'm going to turn it over to then, to the Vice Mayor to describe it a little more and see, get your approval.
Yeah, thank you. So I know I talked to a few of you ahead of time before I booked my flights, just to make sure we were all on the same page. Fortunately, as City Manager mentioned, my rooms now are the exact same price as Mayor's and City Manager's, so there will be no price difference there in registration, and I think my flights are actually a little bit cheaper, just a few hundred dollars cheaper based on the timing of when I'll be returning for the flight, so hopefully that helps, but this will be now, I think, my third year serving on the Executive Committee for MVRPC, and a lot of the representatives from MVRPC are in attendance at the DDC in addition to other elected officials and community leaders. When I went, Pete, what's it been, like four, four, like four or five years now?
Four, five.
At least five, maybe, the last time I went on behalf of Mayor Stone, there are just so many people there, it is hard for us to meet with everybody there, so I've approached Mayor Stone over the summer, and then honestly, I forgot as well when it was coming up, but I think it's beneficial to have more than one elected official there because I know our City Manager has his own group of individuals that he meets with and speaks to, and then as elected officials, there's a separate group that we will meet with and speak with as well, and it, having more people there, I think, is helpful to get our message out and to network with the groups that help us, and especially with MVRPC, with the funding we receive for the matching of the grants I was hoping to attend. So I think those are kind of my justifications for why, but it is a very good event as far as the information that we'll receive. I think one day, I think the second day is just all meetings on the Hill with the representatives, both federal and state, so it's helpful to have that as well.
And we now all know how important the MVRPC has been to us in recent years especially, and so it's good to have that representation. And for the public's point, I think Mr. Landrum mentioned it, there is a budget item that allows us to go to educational events or other events that we individually choose to go to, and some of us use that and some of us don't, so it's not, it's not monies that are not already budgeted, but the Vice Mayor is choosing this as her selection, so to speak. So with that, is there any, any other input?
I can just attest, have to, in another life, going to a number of these Fly-Ins, Your Honor, then, you really work. Gone to these committee meetings and gone to these individual meetings, you're going from morning to night, and you're pretty tired by the time you get back, but what an opportunity, as the Manager already said, to express local government opinion to federal officials and regulators. It's really a fantastic experience.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion to approve the attendance of the three of us at the Dayton Development Coalition Fly-In?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve attendance of the, to the Dayton Development Coalition DDC Fly-In for Mayor Stone, Vice Mayor Garcia, and City Manager Landrum. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Council time. Let's see. Councilman Kern, you want to lead us off?
All right, Your Honor. Since we met the last time, had an opportunity to attend a little reception here for our former Human Resources person, Jill, and it was a very nice opportunity to send her off and give her best wishes. Also, as a number of us attended, we had Officer Spicer's retirement, several decades here with the city of Beaver Creek, doing an outstanding job for the persons in this community, and also, an opportunity, as we had, to witness the swearing-in of Officer Weisscup to the Police Department, and he brings real special skills, I think, that will really be of help, and he will really be in addition to the department. Also, we attended at Resident Sciences, the Mayor's monthly Thursday function, which was just fantastic, to see the size of that building, and then to walk in there and see these huge boxcars and their offices, that's what was just phenomenal, so they're going to really be making a lot of significant contributions in that area. Last thing, I would like to recognize that Beaver Creek Boys bowling championship.
Absolutely.
State champions, and congratulations to them, also to Coach Bob up for all his skill and allowing these young men here to mature and become fantastic bowlers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we going to do the new sign? New sign as well?
Well, we'll get into that. We got to let the new director get through this for one meeting anyway.
Garrett.
All right, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to Girl Scouts for showing up tonight, it's always, this is always a time I look forward to because we get cookies. It's always, this is always a time I look forward to because we get cookies. But they do such a great job in Beaver Creek. I've had an opportunity to visit several of their different activities that they've done, including along with Vice Mayor Garcia and Mayor Stone. Last Sunday, we attended the Gold Award Ceremony downtown at the Ponet Center there at Sinclair. And as was said earlier, seven of the girls that received them, there were 37 from their district, but seven of them are from Beaver Creek. So it's really a nice, good accomplishment. And some of their projects were just amazing, what they did, they really were. I also attended the retirement for Officer Spicer. I've known Jim for a long time, hate to see him go, but he served our city very well for 33 years and we appreciate all that. I went to the groundbreaking along with Mayor Stone, Councilman Bales, Councilman Dewar, and Councilman Curran for the new synergy building. That's going to be synergy building companies that are building a building on Pentagon. It's going to be an amazing building. I think they, now they've filled it up, it's already sold out, so, and they've not even finished building it yet. And I was also able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new Coldwell Banker location on Indian Ripple. They took that, what used to be, I think, an attorney's office and just stripped it down inside and rebuilt it all and really made a nice building out of it. So Councilman Dewar and Councilman Curran were along with me for that one. So I think that's all I have.
All right, very good. Councilman Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. This month, I have the privilege of reading employee anniversaries.
Very good.
In public service, Andrew McVicker, six years, and Matt Frye's, 11 years. In the police, Sean Williams, 18 years, and Ashley Stone, five years. In public service, Kevin Humphries, one year. For communications, Katie Carrico, two years.
Wow.
Both of these in the police, Keith Duncan, 16 years, and Chris Unro, 24 years. In engineering, Jeff Vaught, two years. From parks, Tony Nuss, two years. And from golf, Eric Conley, five years. Following three are from parks, Josh Kersbaum, 22 years. Ursula Kraus Carey, five years, and Russell Mann, seven years. The following three are from the Police Department, Timothy Lamert, 24 years, Kaylee Burnt, three years, and Dylan Zimmerman, three years. The following three are from public service, Alex Harris, nine years, Travis Houston, nine years, and Dawson Randolph, six years. The final three, but not least, from Planning and Development, Don Hutton, two years, Alex Flick, five years, and Roy Stafford, nine years. We are really abundantly blessed to the city of Beaver Creek for our employees and really wonderful years of service, as you've just seen. A few things for me, Mayor. I would like to offer a hearty congratulations to Mr. Mormon and just to say, very well deserved. You have worked hard for many, many years and our city has benefited from your expertise. Anecdotally, you regularly meet with our residents to provide just advice on roads and systems and things I don't understand. So it's very nice for many of us to send people in your direction. You do so without grumbling, you do so with a spirit of service to the community. And we regularly hear back excellent comments of just how you save HOAs and residents money. And so, thank you so much and a very well deserved promotion. And tangentially or concomitantly, the Engineering Department got $8.4 million in grants this past year. And that just kind of blew me away as well. Had the opportunity to likewise attend Officer Charles Wickoff's swearing in ceremony. An amazing servant of our country and Afghanistan veteran, an Army veteran. Mayor, you had a lot in common, Bronze Star recipient, so it was, it was fun to see the two of you together. As Councilman Adams mentioned, I had the opportunity to attend Coldwell Banker's ribbon cutting as well, really excellent, how they've remodeled the, the building and what they've done in the community. And then finally, I had the opportunity to address a group at St. Leonard's Community in Centerville on Russia's invasion of Ukraine and the, the second year of that. And I was very touched because several Beaver Creek residents gave a high honor and came to the talk as well. But very thankful for that opportunity in a, in a neighboring community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to start off by honoring Jeff Mormon. Congratulations to your position. It doesn't seem like 1997 was all that long ago. I can remember it vividly when, when you began here. And so in honor of that, I did a little bit of digging today. And I happened to find the MVRPC Long Range Plan that was adopted in 1997 when Mr. Mormon started. And back then, they did some projecting of population for our region. And I'm happy to say that we've actually overshot their population projections. They produced a long-range transportation map of the entire region. I specifically have the one for Green County. And of course, Beaver Creek is up here in this, this corner. And there are some significant projects that they had put on their list in 1997. And I thought I'd just read a couple of them because Mr. Mormon has had his hands right in the middle of it. And so I appreciate that. So the first one is Dayton-Zenia Road widening from two lanes to three from Grange Hall, road all the way to Beaver Valley. Now, haven't quite gotten all of that, but significant portion. Grange Hall Road widening from New Germany Trebine to Dayton-Zenia Road, which is fantastic. We're working on that, a lot of that right now. Grange Hall widening the bridge over I-675, which is something we're working on again right now. There are a significant number on this list and a lot of them we have completed. Some of them, we've had kind of an ancillary role in, like the US 35 interchanges at various locations. But the point is, we've done a lot in the last, what, 27 years or so? And I appreciate your work. And it was interesting just to, to read the brochure and I'll have it here if you'd like to see it afterwards. The last thing I want to say is thank you to the Girl Scouts for coming in. Scouting is a really important part of my family with my daughter in Girl Scouts and my son in Boy Scouts. So I do have a proud dad brag moment tonight. My son, Jack, received his last merit badge that was required for his Eagle Scout project. So, or for his Eagle Scout Award. So sometime this spring or summer, we're going to have a party.
There you go.
So, thank you, Your Honor.
You're very welcome. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. Well, to be cheeky, I won't tell you where I was in 97, but those are some amazing accomplishments. Mr. Mormon, we're so proud of you. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. We're so grateful to have you as part of our city. Councilmembers, thank you for the approval for the DDC Fly-In. I know Mr. Stone and Councilmember Curran also talked about, Curran also talked about the importance of the event, so I'm excited to be able to go on behalf of the city. I mentioned that this is now my third year. I was just reappointed to the Executive Board for the third year for MVRPC, and we just met last Thursday, so some slight, slightly lengthy updates, but I'll keep it as short as possible. We do have a new resiliency plan in place. So as the designated lead of the long-term recovery efforts from the 2019 tornadoes, MVRPC is leading a regional resiliency planning effort. This is open to all jurisdictions within the agency's planning boundaries and it focuses on natural and human-related hazards. So support for this plan is made possible by the U.S. Economic Development Administration through the Disaster Recovery and Resiliency Plan. So what do you have to, basically, it's talking about what do you have available to you now in addition to seeing some outside resources? So there's a workshop on February 16th that included participants from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODOT, District Seven, and District Eight, and the Ohio Emergency Management Southwest Region. And the things that they talked about, again, were relationship building prior to these threats or hazards occurring, partnering and getting, getting to know the local EMA, local law enforcement, and other community partners and stakeholders. Strong debris management plan to fully take advantage of the FEMA opportunities, which I thought was interesting. And then making sure you have a robust training available to community members and those in the jurisdiction who might be responding immediately. So there will be, MVRPC and Montgomery County EMA are co-hosting a free training opportunity on May 17th geared towards housing after a disaster. So those are just some of the things working on, like the 2019 Memorial Day tornado still is a big part of MVRPC. The plan moving forward and making sure we're helping everybody, God forbid, something like this happens again in the future, we're all prepared. And then we also had a presentation from RTA, they are celebrating 50 years. So some fun facts, over 65% of RTA customers are traveling to jobs followed by healthcare and educational opportunities. And they are hiring, they need 75 bus drivers to cover their 18 bus routes, over 2,500 bus stops with same-day service. Same service all seven days. And they top out at $30 an hour, so people do make a good career with the RTA. They're undergoing a system redesign that's going to improve reaching within a quarter mile of all services, I think roughly 70% of Montgomery County population. And the redesign will also reach 80% of individuals living in poverty, 85% of jobs, and 100% of major hospitals in Montgomery County. So they have a lot of programs in place now to take advantage of short commutes. So they've been partnering with Uber to help people get to those bus stops, so then they can get to the bus stop to take their next destination. So congratulations to the RTA on 50 years. And then also, congratulations to all of our Girl Scouts for the Gold Awards. That was a really great ceremony on Sunday. The, the women come up with such great projects that I'm always interested to hear what encouraged them to do it. So our, our Girl Scouts have done a great job and of course, always appreciate the cookies. So that's it for me. Thanks.
All right. All right. Well, Jeff, 1997. I was campaigning in 1997 and was elected as Vice Mayor. You may or may not remember, that was right when you first came on. So it's been a long road and it's been a pleasure. And I look forward to it being a pleasure for many more years. So, thank you. I'm not going to try to repeat most of these things we've talked about. I mean, the, but in addition to the Gold Awards that some of us attended, there's another award banquet coming up at Ailey Church here before too long for the Girl Scouts. From my end, I attended, along with Pete, the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association Dinner and Meeting. We had a Lincoln Day Dinner that was just a couple of days ago, which was, turned out very good. The Ohio Mayor's Alliance is still strong and going strong. They're watching House Bill One, they're doing the other things, they're the ones that kind of pushing, they and the OML are pushing this resolution about the Local Government Fund. Let's see, oh, 655th, 655th, it's not that difficult to say, but it is. At Wright-Patt, their reserve unit, their reserve intelligence unit. And so they work with the NASIC and they had a change of command. So I was out there for that as well. It's been, ever since I got back from vacation, it's been non-stop. So it's, and I appreciate the things that we all went together, multiples went that threw my name out there, so I don't have to repeat it. The building that you brought up, Mr. Adams, the groundbreaking, that is a SCIF building and that is one of these highly secure buildings. And it, Lindquest is the primary contractor, that's going to take two of the three floors. And while we were at the groundbreaking, they announced the third floor was also then leased just that day. So we are still growing in that, this, our support for the base, and it just keeps right on moving. And with that, I think, oh, yeah, Holiday Inn is, has the host for two of the teams playing in the first four at UD.
Oh, wow.
And I had the opportunity to go out and meet the Pitt team about 3 o'clock this afternoon. They came in. The other team came in earlier in the day and I, and I can't remember their name, but there are two of them there. I'm sure they're having an enjoyable evening and look forward to their games. So with that, I'm going to then turn it over to the City Manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to, this is going public probably tomorrow as a press release. Council was already aware last week as I shared with them an email. But the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, the seven out of seven that I referred to, seven grants we applied for, seven grants we received, tolling in excess of $8.4 million. That's 59% of a grant, a grant match. So what that means is those street levy funds that we asked for, we are levying those dollars to get even more dollars for services for Beaver Creek residents. So outstanding job, that, that is the main, the main performance of engineering staff is to write the grants and to grade the grants and know the projects, to grade the projects and know how many points they'll get so that we can have a high success level of getting these grants. So they do an outstanding job of that to Mr. Mormon and his staff on that. We thank, thank him for his efforts. Taxpayers, thank you for, for your efforts. So moving on to tonight's regular, regular announcements, the city awarded certificate of achievement, again, another outstanding department, the Finance Department, Mr. Casera's Department. The GFOA has awarded the certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting to the Beaver Creek's Finance Department for its annual comprehensive plan. They're always doing this, a couple of years it takes, so this is for, the year ended December 31st of 2021. The 30th year the Finance Department's received this, the 30th year. So that's outstanding. And it's one of the highest forms of recognition the GFOA can. And they've already got the auditor, State of Ohio Auditor's Award as well for 2021. So great job by our Finance Department. We have our summer job showcase. It's Friday, March 24th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then Saturday, briefly, March 25th, from 9:00 to 11:00. This is at the Beaver Creek Golf Course. Available positions include police officers, camp directors, counselors, food and beverage service workers, maintenance workers, golf cart attendants, retail clerks, and so forth. Staff will be available to discuss the responsibilities, expectations, and compensation. And if you're interested, candidates should come prepared with a resume and be ready for onsite interview, except for the Police Department, where we'll have someone there, an officer to answer questions and help them. There's a much more complicated process for applying for a police officer, so they'll guide them through on the steps necessary. But please, March 24th and 25th, Beaver Creek Golf Course, plenty of seasonal positions available. And we are still seeking a grand marshal for the Fourth of July Parade. We haven't necessarily had to have a, a grand marshal, it's nice to ask. We don't want it to feel forced, but there are so many people worthy of this nomination that we hope that those out there, if you know somebody who has dedicated their lives and many years to the service of the city of Beaver Creek, in the, in the essence of deserving, there's an application online that you can complete to fill out. We are taking applications through Monday, May 1st, 2023. If you have any questions though, you can contact the Parks Department as well for any other questions on that. And that's all I have for tonight.
All right, very good. And before we move on, it's very unusual for this, have a meeting and Mr. Burkett is not presenting something to us, you know? He's getting, he's getting all busy tonight. And he's not even hearing me, so it doesn't, he says it doesn't care.
He's distracting me.
We, we dismissed your voice, we had no part of the meeting tonight.
Sorry, I can talk.
All right. Well, listen, we won't go there. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment. And this is a time where anybody can get up and talk to, and talk to council on any issue. And this is a time where anybody can get up and talk, and talk to council on any issue they wish. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council? No, I'm not going to be pushy at all, but I know there's somebody here that's working on a college requirement. Just in case that they might want to introduce themselves and say what the project is, it'd be nice.
Might get extra points.
We can send you the video, too. Please, come up to the microphone, we'd love to hear you.
Okay. Wasn't expecting this, but hello, my name is Kira Smith, and I am a college student that goes to Lubbock Christian University in Lubbock, Texas. And I am here for a community meeting on behalf of my social work, Communities and Organizations class, so, yes.
It's a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you.
And I think you have somebody with you, too, that's very important.
Oh, yes, and this is my mom. This is, she actually works at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, this is Colonel Erica Smith.
All right, very good.
Yes.
Well, thank you for joining us, both of you, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Come back and see us, and I won't put you on the spot next time. All right, anyone else have anything they'd like to address council on? Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.